I'll start with an overview while I wait for him to come in. I know we've talked about this before at Lynn, but this is for the mountain biking trails on the land of Paklet Milliken homes, on both sides of the river, on this side of the road of Old Goshide. So Mr. Lyles is working to apply for a recreational trails program grant, which goes up to a hundred thousand dollars to build the first phases of this trail. The idea for the trail is to line the river as well as kind of capitalize on some of the historical aspects of the mill as well as, I know they've talked about the Indian Head by the river going through it. It's phased off in four sections, I believe, for a total of, I want to say ten miles in total, and it would be completely non-motorized. So it could be for hiking, biking. Hiking or biking, but not for ATVs and not for horses.
Not for horses.
Not for horses. Spartanburg County Parks has agreed to do biannual maintenance of the trail, which is great to have them onboard. And PALS, the Partners for Active Living that has the Dan Trail in Spartanburg, they've agreed to put on all their maps and arrows showing future Paklet Trail on it. So that's good to go ahead and get the ball rolling, although it might not be built today, tomorrow, or next year, but it's coming in the future. It will be single track trail, which means that it would be three feet wide maximum with a trail corridor being cut approximately two feet on each side with an eighth foot overhead. So how the grant works, we have to get public input and comments just to the grant can be reassured that it is something that our community wants and needs. But we can wait for Mr. Lyles to get here. He should be here in the next few minutes because that's all I really know.
Okay. Sorry, y'all waiting on me?
Yes, we are. Straight to the podium, sir.
All right, wow. Sorry about that. Sorry everybody waiting. You guys doing okay?
We're doing fine.
Good? Not too bad. Not bad at all. So hopefully Ally lets you guys know where we are with the trail process. We're going to be applying for the recreational trail program grant, which can offer us up to a hundred thousand dollars in money towards the building of trails in the town of Paklet. We've been working pretty hard to get local support and put together all the packages that we need to be able to submit that package. It's due January 4th. And we, just to give you guys a little background on the trail, so it would be as part of Paklet Milliken property, starting over here, starting at the old mill site near parking where the kayak takeout is. Phase one of the trail systems would be on both sides of the river on the Paklet Milliken land. And we'd be able to get for phase one about four miles on each side of the river. We've been working with Blue Ridge Trail Works to work on the topo maps and understand exactly our best routes as part of our submittal. My company, Lyles Construction, will be commissioning a survey of their, of the land, of the maps to submit with our, with our package. That'll take place sometime between now and January 4th, so trying to pin down the day. That'll help us figure out exactly how many bridges we're going to need for gully and creek crossings, which are typically the more expensive items when it comes to trail building. Right now with the trail systems, we're looking at about six dollars of linear foot with both the trails and the bridges that we presume will need to be out there. In order to offset that six dollars, we're also working with the Palmetto Conservation Corps, which is still a paid group, but it's a not-for-profit group that takes people in different, you know, people that are interested in getting into the outdoor industry. It's a starting point for them. It's a quasi-volunteer organization. You pay for room and board. But they would help us with some of the finished work and help offset, hopefully be able to take about a dollar, a dollar fifty linear foot off of that six dollar cost that we're working on right now. But worst-case scenario, the total budget that we're estimating right now is about three hundred dollars for, three hundred, three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars for the phase one trail system. So the, the first four miles from this side of the river would be our initial focus, which we would put the RTP money towards. That would, the RTP grant and the maps from the town of Paklet, which is really why we're here and asking for that, would be the, would really take care of that first four miles.
You're saying on both sides of the river? Are you saying down the river or up or on the other side?
Right now, and I should have brought some blown-up maps, but it's, it's the parcel that spans the river here. Essentially goes from, from the amphitheater upriver. And it's almost mirrored on both sides of the river there, so it comes all the way down to the dam. So we would actually connect the trails with people coming down here through the, through the flat down here and then going across the bridge, correct, and then tying that in. But it's all on the, we'll call it the north side of the river.
Okay.
The town, Paklet Milliken was most comfortable with that. Actually, we were, because that's the largest piece of property, we originally would save that for phase four, but they would want to go ahead and do that as phase one and just kind of biting off the biggest piece here to start. So the, the RTP grant would really cover the first four miles and we would build on this side of the river, on the town side of the river. And then we would use that momentum, we'd go out and try to raise private funds to match for the additional, and find other grants that they've become available. We've got a lot of good momentum too with connectivity to the Partners for Active Living. Have, they, they've been working hard on the Dan Trail, which has been in on Goldmine Road. As part of their feature plan, they've agreed, and if you look at a lot of the new Dan maps, they show future connectivity to Paklet, which as of last week is a new, a new feature on their map, which is pretty exciting. We've been trying to plot out a way to connect to their trail system. They just got a huge, huge grant from the state and they have a lot of really good plans. They will be ending now about three, four miles shy where these trail systems would land here. So just the ability for future connection is huge. And be able to get everything, you know, to continue from Spartanburg all the way here to Paklet, be on a road bike or, you know, whatever it is. So what we're asking is that the town agreed to be the sponsor of our RTP application and agreed to the match costs of that RTP application. Ally, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand. Thank you. I am wrong. So, yes, we would like to, to match the twenty thousand dollars from the town. And that would be, you know, only if we're approved. And it would be guaranteed one hundred thousand dollars as part of the program. And we've, we're going to go out and raise additional private funds to try for, to make sure if anything gets done to match privately in a private Paklet campaign, the twenty thousand dollars that the town also put up. Have any further questions that can help clarify? If anybody, anybody has any or any comments or ideas too, we're still putting everything together.
I want to imagine the organization is established, it's not a property.
The, the Palmetto Conservation Corps? It is. So they actually do all of the maintenance on the Palmetto Trail. So they were recommended to us by the South Carolina Department of Parks and Recreation and specifically Neil, what's his name, Neil Hammond, who is in charge of the Recreation Trail Program. So actually them being a part of our package is something that looks really good to the grant reviewers here.
Do you have some kind of idea of how much, how many people would use it, what kind of, you know, add to the community would that be as far as shopping or, you know?
Yeah, so we're still, we're still trying to put those numbers together. And I think the best comp right now for a trail of this size and caliber is Lake Welchel. And I don't have those numbers on hand, but I'm happy to send those to you guys. It's a, it's a pretty huge draw. We actually sat at the parking lot one Saturday morning and saw four different state license plates from around, you know, in Gator, fifteen minutes outside of Gaffney.
If you were to base that on because all the eight-five traffic right now, that, that whole entrance to there is shut down.
Yeah. It's hard to get to right now, so yes.
I work with a, one of my coworkers is a big trail bike rider. And there's several of, you know, and groups that get together and they do travel and go to different areas to ride the bike. So it is, it's a big thing, I mean, I'm not in that whole world, but listen to him or what they do and what they do, I mean, it's...
There's a lot of people around Crowe State Park.
Oh, yeah. Crowe State Park is another good comp. That would really be the, that's kind of gold standard to this area of these types of trails.
And where like you're at, you know, I think it would be well-used.
Yes, I've gone in front of just one of the local bike organizations, Spartanburg Mountain Bike Association. They've actually written a letter of support for this project and they've agreed to, I think it's two hundred million hours a year in trail maintenance. And they have four hundred members and, you know, their, their reach goes far beyond that. And that's, that's kind of a good example of just one small group that we've tapped into now that would support this project and would use it. And people that, you know, may not, may not spend really any time in Paklet, if you ever see that trail system. It would be, the idea between ultimately, there's additional phases that we'd like to tie in. We get up to fifteen to twenty-five miles of trail, which we, you know, that's a big swing of course, but depending on Paklet Milliken's input and additional funds, of course, in the next five to ten years, we'd be able to bring in bike races.
The whole Clifton area project is going to be nothing but a big...
Hopefully that would be a very good inspiration, right?
Yeah.
That, yeah, I think being able to connect like these, that project and this project is an outdoor, you know, it's a hub for the outdoors. It's going to be huge.
Do you know how much that grant for connecting with mine was, do you know?
Well, so the Partners for Active Living were, they were worth twenty-three million dollars for their overall Dan Trail. For now, that is, I think, it's like forty-six additional miles of trails that connect all around Spartanburg County. But really until these conversations, it's always been in the back of their mind. They've never, they've never had, with the exception of the nature trail here, anything to connect to. So they're real excited about this possibility. They've been super supportive as well. I'm sorry?
I said, I'm just thinking it's great projects for us to be committed to.
It is a very competitive grant. So applying for it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to do it, but...
Well, we'll do something either way. It just depends how much we, you know, how much we do on day one, the grant would change that a lot. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any willing to forward? Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Lyles?
I can make a few comments about that.
Okay, sure.
I'm Mark Joyner. This is my wife, Hannah. We have a property here in the city of Paklet. We also own property against the heritage preserve on Goldmine Road. And there's been talk about this for many, many years. Dr. Fields with Conservation, Palmetto Conservation, he mentioned about it years ago. And a lot of excitement and it's good to see that it's, that it's coming into fruition. It's good to see that the things on these type of projects that make them successful is, is to have that next step, that contingency plan.
Should you not?
Should you not, to have that contingency plan, should your grant not come in? Like Ally said, this is a highly competitive grant. We want to know that if it doesn't come in, what would we have? What's our step? Also, to win these types of grants, in my experience, which is somewhat limited, but I've done a few things like this. And every time it is, they want to know not just the technical aspects of how do we make it happen, but they want to know why you want to make it happen. What's in it for us? What's in it for Paklet? What's in it for the people who live in the area? And again, I can tell you as a resident, it means a lot. Young people who are not busy find trouble. And so these are the kind of things that we need. And so I just got to throw that out there, and if you need help, I'll leave you my contact information. First person to jump in will have help.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anybody else have any quick comments? Most of the members taking the adjournment of the public hearing, all in favor, all opposed?
Just a little bit of a nod, I mean.
Yeah. All in favor, all opposed? In the presence of the Federal Information Act, the notice of this meeting was submitted by fax to the Spartanburg County Council posted on the bulletin board at the town hall and on the town website on Tuesday, December 1st, 2021. We now have a citizen's comment, Tricia Kaborm. Okay, let her read this. You go ahead and come up. You go ahead and come up to the microphone.
I can hear her. God, I want the citizens to make public comments. The council welcomes public input and has policy section two dash fifty-eight that permits citizens to address members of council. Individuals wishing to speak to the council at a scheduled meeting must submit their name, address, and the topic of their comments to the town clerk prior to the meeting being called a vote. The council will receive comments and speakers as information. Council will not engage in discussing with speakers, take questions, or vote on the subject being presented. Discussion and consideration of concerns, ideas, and topics brought forward can be discussed at future meetings. The council will not permit personal attacks or complaints against town employees in public session. Complaints regarding specific employees must be addressed to the police chief or police staff or the town administrator for all other employees. A group wishing to address the board will be required to choose a spokesman who will make remarks on behalf of all. Speakers should be brief as possible unless the council grants mixed attention. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, section two dash sixty. The council will not permit the major which disrupts the meeting. No one will be permitted to speak who has not been recognized by the mayor or providing officer of the council.
Okay, Mr. Lori, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rea and City Council for allowing me this time. I'm bringing a very serious situation which has persisted for a very long time. And now it has gotten to a point where myself and some of my neighbors are at risk because we are being besieged by rats. And it is because of two factors. It is alleged, and I say alleged because I don't have any proof, but it is alleged that the resident who lives across the street keeps garbage in his house and other rubbish. The other part of it is that there was a fire several years ago, at least four, four years, or maybe even five. The house next door to me at two, I mean, two fifty-eight burned down. And the hill was never leveled, the rubbish was never cleared. And now it's gotten to the point where it is so serious that you can't even walk down the sidewalk because the bottles are overgrown. And we have been subjected to, my neighbor told me that he's killed three rats in his house. And now I have an attic, and I also have a daughter that is disabled. So not only is it a hazard, but it's a health hazard. It's, I, I've talked to the council about this before in terms of clearing, you know, the hill. They told me they didn't know how to get in contact with the owner. I talked to my neighbor who gave me the manager of the facility, of the property number, which I passed along. I have made numerous calls, which will be substantiated by the town secretary. And I don't know why, as a senior citizen on a fixed income, that I have to be burdened with paying over a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I've had people come out. I've had traps set. I've done all I can do to abate the problem. And I'm really in my wits' end and I'm really very angry about it because this has been going on for a number of years. And I didn't come to Paklet to live with rats. I've never lived with rats before and I'm not happy about doing it now. And I am really urging the city council, under the leadership of the mayor, to take some action because I don't want to hear any more excuses. I'm at my wits' end. And I should not be victimized if in fact the city has not been diligent in terms of clearing that hill. If they have to do it and, and bill the owner, he had a for sign sale on that lot. It's down now. And it's not fair. You know, I'm very diligent about taking out my garbage and so is my neighbor. And if in fact, it is a fact that the person across the street who various neighbors have reported that he's really filthy, then something ought to be done. There has to be some kind of provision where if a person poses a health hazard or a health risk to his neighbors, that actually can be taken. So I really urge you because I really don't want to be authority on your side, but I'm not going to pull up with mice anymore. I'm just not going to do it. So I thank you and I hope that you can expedite some kind of action because I do have options. And that's not, you know, threatening anybody, but I, I'm not going to do it. How would you feel if you walked up in the night and you heard something scurrying across your attic floor? Or you go to get a drink of water and there's a big rat running across the floor? I don't think it's fair and I think that there has been, somebody dropped the ball and now it's time to pick it up and clear that field. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take that into consideration and look into the problem.
Thank y'all for, excuse me.
You want to have a reading and speaking to it, please?
Well, I thought it was. Okay, now let's...
That's good.
What's your dog? Your dog, can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank y'all for letting me speak. On behalf of the Rose, White Rose Cemetery Committee, they wanted me to come and ask the town would reimburse us some, some money or give us a sizable donation so that we can keep the grass cut at White Rose Cemetery because we're losing money since we couldn't get, work the Christmas lights this year. So, you know, if y'all sit there hard, I wish you would because we had to switch lawn care services. It's charging us five hundred dollars a cut now. So it's, it's not cheap keeping that cemetery up. And that's where all our money was made, at the Christmas lights. And also, excuse me, we're getting ready to have a burial for the, the child's remains, the fetus that was found on Milliken Street near the wall. And we're going to bury the child at White Rose. And due to the age of the child and how it was being and everything, that was the only cemetery around at that time. So we just thought it was just right just to put her there. So I didn't know if y'all would be interested in attending. I can verify when we do. Having all put together, I'm waiting on the funeral home in the corner to, to okay everything and get everything going. And then we're going to have her, we'll have like a little grace out service and that's all we'll have for her. We'll have a patch for there. And, you know, just a small little community ceremony. So I didn't know if you'd like for me to, I'd be glad to tell the mayor or colleague, each other, or whatever you want. If you'd like to attend, just let me know. Thank y'all for letting me speak. Merry Christmas, Ally. Have a good one.
Thank you, Rea. Okay, the approval of minutes for the regular town meeting in November 4th, 2021. Most of the members taking the approval of minutes for the November 4th, 2021 meeting, all in favor, all opposed? We have the first reading ordinance providing the annexation of approximately one-two-one-nine acre track along, we'll locate it on five seventy-six Vine Church Road, that's out. Number three dash thirty dash zero-zero dash zero-one-three dot oh-three.
This annexation request was received last week from the owners of the property. It is on Vine Church Road. It's eligible for annexation due to it being, the current line is up to the road. So it can be annexed in. The property is used as a rental Airbnb property. And the owners would like to annex in to ensure proper police protection, to ensure their guests that they wouldn't have to wait for a long response from the county as well as to receive trash pickup. I recommend this annexation as it will bring in not only property base, but also business license from the Airbnb.
Any questions? I'm making a motion to approve orders twenty-one dash one-six.
One second.
Most of the members taking the approval of the order twenty-one dash fifteen, any other questions? All in favor, all opposed? Okay, resolution twenty-one dash fifteen, resolution being the town of Paklet. It's by a local mass for South Carolina Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. Administered, administered the recreational trail program, RTP grant, and following the procedure, policy of security services and products for the grant funds.
Right, and like Mr. Lyles talked in the public hearing, what this says is if we do receive the grant, that the town will either give funds to do it, they can also be in kind if we were to get services donated. We've talked about, you know, maybe Golden could potentially donate some gravel. Things like that count in that percentage, but we have to ensure the grant that if received, we will be able to carry our car. And the town will be the one applying for the grant. Typically, I'll be the one submitting it. Since I'll not be here, Mr. Lyles will be submitting the grant on, we've worked on it for a long time, but on the town's behalf.
Any questions? I'm making a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash one-five. Most of the members taking the approval of the resolution twenty-one dash one-five, all in favor, all opposed? The discussion and consideration of trash, how to trash cargo out, schedule and regulation... regulation.
So I do have good news. We received in all twelve-hundred of our trash carts, um, the week before Thanksgiving or the week of Thanksgiving, I think before. Um, we have them off store. They will have to be put together, um, just the wheels snapped on. So we hope to, once we get the rules and regulations nailed down and the additional cart purchase begin rolling them out, um, within the next few weeks. Um, I've provided for you a three-page, um, documentation that has one overview of the rules and procedures, one graphic chart, and it's that one in your hand, didn't you? And then the following is a short kind of Q and A, general questions. Um, if you look over that, that is what we would like to fold up, put in the envelope, and distribute with all of the cans. And what it says is that you must use the town car, you must be at the road, um, with us using the public funds to get the carts. We have to make sure that we follow, you know, them not touching the bags anymore. Um, so a few things that we do need to decide, um, if someone doesn't have, or someone already has a roll cart of their own, can they use that? Or does it have to be the town? Do we want to be completely uniform? And it just be the town cart? If they need additional one, they can come and get it from the town, um, but it has to be the town car. I've seen municipalities do it both ways. That's just something that, um, council needs to discuss and decide before we roll them out.
If you choose, however we decide, uh, if we, if we also choose to do it both ways if you already have a cart, will that cart or should that cart display as well town pack as the other ones are?
Yeah, that's the thing. If they provide their own, it would.
I think the biggest issue here is, is if the cart is able to be picked up by the mechanism on the back of the garbage truck. There's a lot of people have rolled carts. They don't have the proper bars and, and, and it doesn't facilitate the truck. So if they do have it, then they can use it as a second. But if it's not able to be picked up by the truck, then I'm sorry, please don't complain because the object here is to prevent them from having to grab the trash bags out of the, and use the truck to lift the cans. So if there's some trash carts that don't have the proper bars and they fill them, we can't, don't.
So then we figure out the front of the car. We're gonna have to see the car? We cannot, I don't, there's no measurements or anything?
When you purchase, when you purchase a trash can.
But if, but if...
Yeah, if you already have one, I think that's one thing, too.
Yeah, so if you already have one, it's the bar.
Some have one bar and then a lift that's molded into the plastic, and some have two bars.
I know we do have some roll carts that can't be on the, dumped on the truck.
Yeah, so how would, how would I know that or how would, you know, Mr. Smith know that?
And I think that's why most municipalities do make it uniform. It has to be ours.
Yeah, so there is no...
Gray line.
I think the, the issue with that is, is if you overflow, what do you do? Then you're picking it up off the ground or...
And that's what we do have, we will, I do have on the next item on the agenda to decide what we want that amount to be for additional cans. Um, I've researched different municipalities and found between seventy-five to sixty-five. So I recommend seventy, um, because the price has gone up. Um, and that would be a one-time fee. You would come to town hall, pay your seventy-five dollars, and then you would have use of the can at that residence. You would not own the can. The can would still be property of the town, but we would be letting you lease there or use it and have that documentation. So each can would be assigned to the actual residence, not to the person.
The second can, I'll start you off with, okay? That's what I...
The first can is one, and then seventies for the second.
Yeah, everybody will get one can, and then any additional cans would be that cost.
Okay, so it's uniform? Do you have a second?
Seven is a can, can four is a can. Seventy-five thousand is a lot, so it's...
And you can make it what you want. Um, I think our wholesale cost was fifty-eight, I believe, per can. Um, but then when we get it back, then it's not gonna be in, in that condition. Um, so it's, it's up to you all to decide.
Okay, so, okay. What if they decide they don't need it after walking?
Yeah, they can return it, um, but it's just like a, a rental fee on those stuffs.
But I, I, I know that there's gonna be some families that can't afford this, and they're not gonna understand why they even need to pay fifty dollars of money that they already don't have to something that's not even gonna be theirs, even though it's a very important thing to have, that they're not gonna be able to just, uh...
It is a second can.
I know, but I know, I know some people are gonna need a second can, and I know for a fact that they can't afford a second can. This one's expensive. It's, it's... I mean, they're, 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 they're able what they can do now. So I'm just saying, and they, cause it's...
But we do need to decide before we are able to distribute the cans. But we can, we, we can hold off on distributing.
We can distribute the initials, however the secondary can be laid.
Okay, so I did have it on that sheet, so I know people will call and ask. Um, when we give out the first one, some people are gonna automatically know they need a additional can and call and ask.
Well, yeah, if they do, we can go ahead and partner with that can, but we're not gonna, well, it's like three...
How will this, how will that cost be?
It will, so they would, if they need additional can, we have them to call town hall or come to town hall. Um, Kayla will, they'll come in, say they need a can. We'll send Travis out to document, get the number, serial number on the can, and then take it to the residence. Kayla would document that. So she's gonna have a master Excel sheet because every can will have a serial number assigned to a residence. So when they go out and distribute all the cans, they'll write down trash can zero-one, one-eighty Montgomery Avenue. So if one-eighty Montgomery Avenue comes back in and says, I need additional can, okay, can two, one-thirty Montgomery Avenue. So that log will be there where each can is.
Okay, um, the one-time fee, that will be paid to town hall?
Yeah, paid to town hall to buy the resident and put to the general fund.
For the additional.
For the additional can, and that will be documented on that master sheet.
Have we decided if we wanna do it uniform or if somebody has a can that works? Or you, or...
Well, if somebody has a can that works, and then it, then if they, could they...
But it satisfies the ordinance as far as being able to be stored properly?
The, if it satisfies the ordinance where the trash guys don't have to use their hands to pick it up. So if, if the can is not able to be lifted by the truck, and it is left there still full, then that's going to be the issue in the future. Cause how many people do not have their trash picked up because the truck wasn't able to pick it up, uh, because the can doesn't fit the truck?
And what I was trying to make up was that they would get an additional can like everybody else, even if they have a can that works, if we go that route, if they have a can that works, and then they get their initial a can that everybody else gets, and they have their second can that costs.
Right, right, if it works.
If it works. That's for those who can't afford, because they can, they would use that again.
I think the idea is, is if there, if there are citizens that have a can, think that works, but it simply doesn't, then what do you do at that point?
That's what I'm saying. We need to find out what measurements are.
It is a bar.
All cans, all cans that are able to be picked up by the truck are the same. They have the same size.
Mine has a bar.
You're right, right, yes. If your, if yours has a bar across and a lid above, then the truck can pick it up. And there's some cans that simply don't, they, they, they look appropriate, but they, they don't work. And typically, it's either fifty or seventy gallon roll carts. It has to be the right height, it has to be the right width, for the thing to stand there, and it has to lift it. So there's a lot of things, but what I know is, is if the can was bought specifically for a truck to dump, then it can always be dumped by those trucks, because they're all going to the same way. However, you buy a twenty-five gallon trash can that you know can stick three bags in, it's not gonna be able to be dumped by the truck. Even if you might think it should be or could be, it's not going to be. And then at that point, you're going to have a phone call at the town hall, they need to pick up the trash. And then Tony's gonna have to talk to potentially, you know, fifteen, twenty people.
So either way, if you follow the ordinance, the issue would have come up with...
Right, and, and if, and so there's going to be complaints, there's going to be something that says, well, it should work, I don't know why it doesn't, and you need to pick it up. I've paid taxes to pick up a trash. So if the ordinance says that only these specific trash cans, town-owned trash cans can be dumped, then you have to either buy a secondary or we have to decide whether you can use your own, which is going to create no work and potential issues with the citizens because their can wasn't able to be dumped.
And that, um, separate, um, can, speaking of, that means we stop the, instead of pushing that eight seventy-five dollars.
Um, it could, it would probably be hard to, harder to keep up with. Um, it could cause issues of people not paying, saying, okay, I'm gonna come in, my first piece is ten dollars, and then you'll never see them again.
Right.
Um, but...
I'm just wondering, that's gonna be an issue, or that's gonna be an issue kind of becoming totally part of it?
That's kind of the last part of the final...
Now, now, keep in mind, um, most...
People that can not afford that.
Most trash cans that, that I've seen on the streets are not roll carts, they're seventy gallons. Most of them are thirty gallon cans. They're fixing, they're getting ready to get a cart that will hold almost double what everybody, I've picked up the trash several times with the truck, picked up the trash several times with the truck, and, and most people have a twenty-five, thirty gallon can. They're getting ready to have a seventy gallon can. So a lot more garbage will fit in the town issue can than what they previously had. So I, I think, I think the, the idea is that they're going to only be able to use one can like before, where they might have had two small ones or something like that. Most other municipalities, one can is plenty enough. Now, if you have a family of seven and you produce a lot of, you know, garbage...
They still have four cans, and they, and they, and they bust out from those cans every week.
And I know I've heard we had some that'll have like four or five cans out and have one bag each one, which then creates a lot of wasted time because you're getting...
Yeah, I, I've seen that myself.
Would they, would, you know, there's a...
It needs to be uniform, um, across all the citizens in the town to make it, to make it easy. So if we decide that you're allowed to use a separate can, that's fine, but that's uniform across the town if the can can be dumped by the truck. Or we can make it easier for the town and, and the town's office and say, it's only the town's issued cans. I mean, as well as me, I have to sell mine or throw them away or give them to somebody or something of that sort. If it's only pack of issued cans, you know, so, so everybody right now have to either make a decision. Are you using only the town cans or you going to buy a second one as well? There's always the idea that if you have too much, you can't fit it in a single can. Then it costs roughly from here to the dump, maybe eight dollars of gas to throw away the rest.
But you have a argument there. I'm just looking out for those.
I understand.
Yeah, I'll do finally, you're gonna have a can, or that, that is, is, is...
I don't think we're gonna do it anymore. We're, this, and then you're...
So we'll hold off on distributing for, until we decide?
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to find some kind of middle ground for those who aren't gonna be able to afford a second can, but need that second can.
Are we not on an additional one or are we going, only on the second?
Second, second can.
So...
Go ahead and roll out the...
One can.
Yeah.
But then what will, what do I need to tell the girls in the office when someone calls because they need additional can?
The issue is, is if we, if we distribute any cans whatsoever, then they have to be able, we have to decide whether they can only pick up pack of cans or we'll allow them to pick up their private cans, or they have to get additional cans through the town pack as well. So if we let any cans go out right now, then we have to decide whether there's extra trash cans there, the trash company, or trash bags pick them up, or they don't.
Well, if, if we're not willing to distribute all at one time anyway.
Yeah, it'll take weeks, you know? We don't have a, how, exactly how long it'll take, um, but...
We need to, we need to make them aware then that if we distribute these, you know, make them beforehand, you know, make them understand that this is the way it's gonna be.
Mm-hmm, cause that's, that was the goal, is to take the packet, we'll put it in an envelope, put it to the can, so when they get their can, they'll open the envelope, have a full disclosure of everything it entails, what they can do, what they can't do, how to get another one, um, general questions back, and then it's all out there.
So as the cans go out, that, that's just gonna be a cost to the postal service to mail everybody in the town.
And while it's still clean and...
Brand new, it'll give you a letter. This is what you do if you want a second one or use or not.
And the goal, you know, going back a few years, the goal of the trash ordinance and the cans is an overall to clean up the town, beautify the town, get the trash cans off the road, get the litter, get the bags from being broken, um, when everything, when it's all uniform, you know, they all have the lids, the lids must be closed, the trash doesn't blow out, and that was the goal all along.
And, and that's, we've talked about why the trash truck, the trash truck was purchased with the idea of we're going to get trash cans eventually and use specific cans, so everything wasn't the same. Dumps, they don't have to pick through it, get it off the ground, so it's like, I think that's the...
That's what, yeah, that's what, you know, I know all of the, the other, we missed out, if, all that, take charity county, they don't, they do just charity county. Trash cans, don't do anybody else.
I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, I know. All right. You did, you, you, you gave us, yeah, a resolution for twenty-one dash one-six.
Uh, the resolution is to decide on the cost. Um, but if, if we, if you all, we would like to make a decision, um, we would need a motion to vote for that, just so we, I can give direction.
And you said one can costs fifty-eight dollars.
That's what we pay at our wholesale. And, you know, the, if, I don't, I haven't seen any that give them out for free, but then if you did, gave out additional ones at no cost, we would have to go buy more. We would, everybody might, would want more, and we wouldn't have enough.
So are you looking to make a profit at asking for seventy, or are you looking...
No, it would just be for the damages as well as for additional service.
Brains, axes, and wheels, and lids. I make motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty-one dash one-six, one-time fee.
Motion made to take the, approve the resolution twenty-one dash one-six. Any other questions? All in favor?
And just to clarify, that's for the, if they want to get a can for the fee, but are we going to allow their own if it does dump?
So we, we drop that, I'm ready to, uh, allow any other cans when you, uh, vote on that, too.
I think it needs to be uniform. Obviously, the resolution for that to be...
Just to discuss, just to discuss, talk to the other direction.
Yeah, I, I think my personal opinion is it needs to be uniform so that, that way it's simplified for the town employees. They know what to pick up, what not to pick up, and the residents will eventually understand this is the way it's going to be and... and long-term, I think it's a better idea.
Because no one wants change. Eventually, when they get into the routine, they know what to expect.
It's gonna be a change for some, I mean, they got some in, uh, little apartments and things here, and they, there's gonna be a big change for them.
I think that's the major thing is, like, right now, some, some residents, the trash bags have to grab the bag out of the can, because they can't really...
Okay, is, uh, any other, I mean, do, anybody have any objections to, uh, doing it uniform?
No need.
Okay, uh, okay.
I have a concern, I just want to bring it up. Now...
Do I, that work?
The trash that's going, if, if they don't get the, the second can, and there's an overflow, okay? And the trash isn't being picked up, and it's gonna cause a mess, because I know there's gonna be some people, the trash is gonna pile up. So is there gonna be some...
That's where the code enforcement officer...
That's what I'm getting to, so is he ready to handle that?
Yeah, he'll be finished with the certification by the end of the year.
Okay. That was my question.
We all agree with the uniform? Okay. Okay, move to number ten, resolution twenty-one dash one-seven, a resolution to appoint Ray Eubanks, uh, representing from the Appalachian Council Government, to as interim part-time Town Administrator for Town Paclet.
Thank you, Mayor Camby, members of the Town Council. Uh, first of all, I just want to say it's an honor to serve you again. I recognize a lot of the, some decisions we've had in the past. Uh, and I've been here and there involved with, uh, with Paclet, so, uh, I, I'm honored with the opportunity to continue to serve you. Uh, certainly, we're gonna miss Alex, we've got a great opportunity, and, and she knows all the Clemson. Uh, my goal, uh, is to do the best I can, uh, through the process, to get good applicants in for this council to consider as a replacement. Had a great meeting with, uh, Mayor Camby, uh, before Thanksgiving, and we've actually already got, uh, one. Uh, we just did get it posted at the Appalachian Council Government's website, MASC, and I just sent the job posting to USC's, the Maestro's Public Administration Program, as well as Clemson's and the College of Charleston. So hopefully, we're casting a pretty good net, we're gonna get some good applicants in. Uh, we've asked that they be submitted by December twenty-second. Uh, I will certainly keep this council appraised, uh, of that process as we go, uh, and, and hopefully, I think we'll get some good, there's a lot of exciting things going on right now in Paclet. And so I think that, uh, there's gonna be some, uh, it's gonna attract particularly some of the young, uh, up-and-comers like, like Alex is, and hopefully, we'll get some good applicants for that. Meanwhile, uh, certainly as your administrator, I will be on-site the better part of every Tuesday, but I'm also gonna be available to every one of you, uh, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. I know that this job is, is, is always on. And so, uh, I had a good discussion with, uh, Tony and Casey last week. They have my cell phone number, Mayor Camby does. I'd be glad to share it with every one of y'all. Uh, Chief Alexander has that. Uh, and, you know, I look forward to supporting the staff. I look forward to working to make sure your goals and plans are pursued. And my job as director is just gonna be the caretaker, and to keep the ball rolling, and to continue what y'all are working on, uh, on a day-to-day type basis. And I also work to facilitate the process to get some good applicants for this council to consider, uh, for the next administration here for the Town Paclet. So, again, thank you for the opportunity. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. And, uh, with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Can we change this resolution to more than part-time?
Sir? I, I didn't hear anything.
The resolution says part-time, can we change that?
It would be part-time. I've given us some other things to do with the cop, but I would be doing whatever I need to do here. And, uh, Mr. Ryan, there's a, a meeting that you set trail once you down there for next Wednesday or next Thursday morning, I wanna meet with these folks. Anything like that that comes up, I'm gonna be available to you, and I'm gonna be here, uh, to, to take care of that, and do what I need to.
So all, all, all business that, that is not able to be tied up by Alex, you're familiar with, aware of, and...
Alex and I, uh, not near as clear as she is, but we did have a good meeting on Tuesday of this week. Uh, so I know where the files are, I'm gonna get access to the computer. Uh, but basically, we've got an excellent clerk that has been here and knows this town as good as anybody, and told me, and I basically told her last, uh, Tuesday that my job is to support what y'all are doing, the same thing I told John earlier with the super walk again. So, uh, but yes, I do have access to everything. I will be available to, you know, tap in. If there's information you need, let me know, make sure we get it, uh, get it out to you. And again, my job is just gonna be to keep, keep things going, keep addressing the plans, goals, the things that this council needs to achieve.
As far as concerns with the employees, you got that covered, too, right? Day-to-day concerns? If the chief has an issue or something, you're, you're able to work with him?
Absolutely, yes. One thing I did was actually part of the process to select the next chief, and then he's doing a lot of great things. But, uh, again, my role is gonna be to support him, and if he has a major issue one night, I, I, I'll get a phone call, and he's gonna say, here's what's going on. Do we need to let, deal with the press? Do we need to let the mayor and council know about it? And we'll talk through that and come up with a solution. So I'm available to John twenty-four, seven, I'm available to all of y'all, the same thing, yes. And I've just gotta take it...
The traps as well, the, the trash, the trash crew. Is there any law that'll come in?
And I, I, I can just sense there's getting ready to be some big changes. So I think y'all are working to do some good things. I know there's been discussion for a while. I think the safety, uh, of the employees are gonna be benefited by what you're doing. I think having a uniform, uh, with the lids on it is gonna be a benefit to the community. You're not gonna have the trash blowing out. And I think some good points made, you know, once somebody gets their first container and realizes the size of it, it's probably gonna take care of a lot of their needs. Uh, so I think, but there is that change. And so there's gonna be the process, so I think Alex presented the, uh, the documentation each citizen's gonna get, uh, and I will be available to citizens to answer questions. Certainly, ma- majority of those calls are coming to Tony and Casey, but I'll certainly be available to, to, to help with any citizen and, and explain anything that they have come up with, yes.
Thank you.
Any other?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash one-seven.
Motion made, executive, approve resolution twenty-one dash one-seven. All in favor? All opposed. Thank you. Need to execute session, uh, through the Falconico, section thirty dash four dash seventy dash eight, to discuss negotiation in, uh, proposal contract regarding the, uh, proposal sale of real property.
I make a motion, enter, executive session.
Motion made, executive, enter, table session, all in favor? I actually have taken, taken a session, we want the, uh, the level of the candidates.
All right, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet tonight, shortest one I've ever done, I think. Um, first, the Home Town Economic Development Grant that we spoke on last month, work has began on repairs at the Paclet Amphitheater Grounds. Patriot Electric has pulled the necessary permits to support Mer County Building Cuts, and has had a pre-inspection done. They've removed all the compromised outlets and posts, and have begun their replacement process. Mr. Eubanks will be following through with the progress and reimbursement of the grant. Uh, I've spoken to him about this, and, and we anticipate the project to be completed by no later than January the thirty-first. The toy drive, we, we received personalized requests and for Christmas gifts for thirty-one children. Kayla will be placing Christmas style boxes around town the first of next month to begin accepting the donation, next week, not month, um, to begin accepting the donations. And as a reminder, the giveaway day will be Saturday, December eighteenth here. Um, Kayla will coordinate with Nivea, and anyone who wishes to volunteer, please let her know. The Christmas parade will be next Saturday, December the eleventh, beginning at ten a.m. We have nineteen entries into the parade as of today. Applications can be picked up at Town Hall or filled out on our website. Then immediately following the parade, Spartanburg County Parks will be hosting a Christmas event at the T.W. Edwards Center, and it will feature candy, hot chocolate, and a visit with Santa. Code enforcement, Chris, Chris Harper will be finishing his training and getting his International Property Maintenance Code certification by the end of this month, um, through CCI. His training in Woodruff has been great for him. He's learned how to deal with some of the issues that we're facing. Um, he's actually talked about the issue that the, um, lady spoke about earlier. And, um, just on your own behalf, we'll just continue to promote the recording of code enforcement via the text my gov and the website contact form. Those will be sent to Mr. Harper directly, and it will kind of speed up the process. And then, like Mr. Eubanks spoke on, the Town Administrator Search, I'll be available to assist with the transition as much as possible. I'll always be available for phone calls and texts to answer any questions. And once someone is hired, I'm happy to come back as a day or two and show them around and kind of dump my brand as much as I can. Um, that's kind of all I have, and just to finally thank you, I won't go into a long detail like I did last time, but just thank you all for the opportunity and for believing in me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alex.
Town, do you have anything, do you have any... Don't you think that...
No.
At this point, I say thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You, you have done a lot for this town, and you've made this town go all the ways. Come on all the ways. And I think you set the foundation for the future. Believe that footsteps of whoever takes over, even Mr. Eubanks, oh, thanks for doing what you do. Thank you, God bless. But, yeah, you did such a great job. I was surprised, and I am very thankful for everything that you've done, for all the people you brought here, for everything that's getting ready to happen in this town. I think you set the groundwork for it. I really appreciate it. And, uh, again, thank you for, Chief, always a wonderful job. And make sure that the trash can, I really appreciate it, too. I know that there's, have a good day out there most of the time. On that, awesome, thank you.
Second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I would, thank everyone for, you know, everything you all have done. Thank you, Alex, for your help and your insight and leadership here. And, uh, I know you will do a good job in Clemson, but, uh, uh, we'll miss you. And, uh, um, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and we'll, um, offer a dinner with that.
Make a motion to adjourn. I second.
Motion made, adjourn, second adjourn, all in favor?